Session assumed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to lift the suspension of the rules, Mr. Speaker.
The House rules, the lift, the suspension of the House rules is still by lifted.
May we respectfully recognize MP... MP Anata Basman to continue the interpolation.
We reopen again the period of debate and interpolation and recognize MP Anata Rahata Basman as one of the proponents who defend civil service code. Uh, the next member to interpolate is MP Loong. I think he's joining the...
Okay.
Yes. The gentleman from Sulu, MP Loong, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, my first query, Mr. Speaker, is as regards the examination for IPs, Mr. Speaker. Um, I'd like to inquire from the authors if, um... We have, uh, the... Who are the Moro IPs? We know the non-Moro IPs, I mean the... Who are the, um... Who are the tribes included in these IPs, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, uh, let me begin with, uh... With a salam to my fellow Member of Parliament. Uh, Mr. Speaker, when we talk of Moro IPs, we actually refer to all of the thirteen ethno-linguistic groups that form part of the definition of the Bangsa Moro.
So, Mr. Speaker, um, when we say that we're going to have a special examination for the IPs, then it refers to everyone in the Bangsa Moro, from the Maranau, Magindanao, um, Tausog, Yakan, Sama, and all the thirteen ethno-linguistic tribes, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, all that belong to what is defined in the BOL as indigenous peoples, both Moro and non-Moro. So, Mr. Speaker, this excludes, uh, um, groups within our population who are not, uh, by definition indigenous peoples.
Um, Mr. Speaker, that's why I want to clarify, who are those that by definition are not indigenous people?
So, Mr. Speaker, by definition, those will be the settler communities in the region.
Um, the reason why I'm asking this, Mr. Speaker, is as we know, there is the IPRA law, and, um, the IPRA had excluded some of the, uh, dominant, uh, Moro tribes from its coverage of the definition of indigenous people. So, I'd like to be clarified, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, actually, uh, the IPRA law or RA eighty-seven, eighty-three seventy-one defines indigenous peoples or indigenous cultural communities as a homogenous, a group of people or homogeneous societies who by self-inscription or inscription have continuously lived as organized communities on communally bounded and defined territory, uh, and many other similarities within the same agglomation. Mr. Speaker, if we talk about the definition by law, by text, then definitely the Moro, the thirteen ethno-linguistic groups of the Moro people are included in this definition. How that is interpreted in the implementation in the NCIP is another question altogether.
So, Mr. Speaker, what is important for me is that we are clear that, uh, when we say IPs in this, uh, um, civil service code for the Bangsa Moro, then it, uh, refers to the thirteen ethno-linguistic, uh, tribes, uh, in the Bangsa Moro, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker, the IPs in the Bangsa Moro includes the thirteen ethno-linguistic, uh, Moro tribes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, my, uh, my, um, um, comment here, Mr. Speaker, is the, the... Under Article fourteen, the word may be converted to shall so that it will be, uh, mandatory, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, are we talking about that Article sixteen on special examinations for IPs in the Bangsa?
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, the Article fourteen on special examinations for indigenous peoples in the Bangsa.
I think, Mr. Speaker, the language is already, uh, directory. It already uses the word shall in that article.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, my next comment, Mr. Speaker, is as regards the special provision on temporary appointments for Damu Jahidin that, um, under this provision shall be for the period of transition in the Bangsa Moro government renewable for every twelve months. Now, considering that we are just going to approve the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code, um, maybe we, we should improve the wording, um, in such a way that it is effective, uh, until the BTA is dissolved, or for the, it is effective for the entire period of the transition.
Um, Mr. Speaker, while the intention I understand and, uh, I, I appreciate is, uh, well-meaning, uh, by law, Mr. Speaker, temporary appointments can only last for a maximum of one year. Hence, the limitation in this, uh, stated provision of validity for twelve months. However, Mr. Speaker, we have also provided here the permissibility of renewing that temporary appointment for, uh, three more times, so it might even exceed the current period for transition, Mr. Speaker.
Well, um, actually, uh, my point, Mr. Speaker, was assuming that, uh, um... The, uh, because we're going to approve it in twenty-twenty-one and it's only effective for the transition, um, that it will be only effective up to twenty-twenty-two. But as we know that there's a congressional hearing already for the extension, then the word that it is effective in the entire period of the transition period or the dissolution of the Bangsa Moro authority, uh, whichever, uh, comes in. But, eh, uh, I think my point is, uh, already, uh, expressed, Mr. Speaker. Uh, we will just, uh, discuss it again in the period of amendment. My third point, Mr. Speaker, is on, uh, the issue of the, the three levels in the career service, Mr. Speaker. Our proposal is that there are still three levels, um, but here in the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code, the third level, um, I'd like to inquire from the proponent, is the third, um, level of the ca-career service, the second level with executive and managerial functions.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, that is the third classification in this civil service code that does not substitute, uh, it does not replace the third level position as defined in national laws.
Um, Mr. Speaker, however, um, um, in our proposed law, we did mention that there will be, uh, still, uh, three levels in the, in the career service. So, my worry, Mr. Speaker, is that, uh, this will be confusing, um, because for the national, uh, administrative code, uh, the three levels simply refer to the first level, second level, and third level, which is the CES. And, uh, here in the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code, we still have, uh, three classifications, um, but, uh, the, the second and third classifications are second level with just a distinction in the, in the... One is technical and the other one is executive and managerial. Uh, my, my concern, Mr. Speaker, is that it might, uh, lead to confusion in, in the future.
Mr. Speaker, as in many of the provisions, uh, quite a number of, of the provisions in the civil service code, there will be matters that are going to be unique to the Bangsa Moro, uh, civil servants, and that is one such, uh, an example. So, in the case of the Bangsa Moro civil service, uh, civil servants, we have three classifications, the third of which is the second level positions exercising executive or managerial functions.
Um, Mr. Speaker, so I'd like to be clarified, so there is no third level eligibility in the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code?
That is correct, Mr. Speaker.
Third level eligibility requirement. And the wisdom for this, uh, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to be set on the record, I'd like to be clarified on what is the wisdom, why we are totally removing the third level eligibility, um, requirement in the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code?
Mr. Speaker, uh, without, um, belaboring the points already expressed yesterday, we are talking of Bangsa Moro civil servants in this Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code by reason of the requirements in the law, national law, that third level positions be presidential appointees, no such, and, and there being that reality that no such positions exist in the Bangsa Moro civil service, then, uh, it becomes, uh, unnecessary to be included in the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code.
Um, Mr. Speaker, um, while I, uh, understand that, uh, um, that there is no such position, although as we had discussed many times in the Supreme Court decision as regards, uh, the deputy superintendent, um, which required career executive service positions, um... Mr. Speaker, um, in, in the opinion of the proponent, wh-why does the national government require, uh, career executive service eligibility, uh, in the first place? For other positions in the national level?
May I ask Mr. Speaker, the good gentleman, to repeat his question?
Um, well, um, I'll go direct to the point, Mr. Speaker. The reason why the national government require career executive service, uh, officers, uh, eligibility is that for career positions, um, which an employee, a public servant, exercises for the rest of his life, for thirty years or forty years, the career executive service office, uh, provides as number one, the standard where they have the technical, managerial capacities. Number two, they are continuously assessed by the career executive service board on a yearly basis, and then the career executive service board provides for continuous training on important, um, managerial and technical capacities. Now, that is why in the national government, you see highly competent, highly effective, uh, uh, public servants. So, if we are going to, assuming that, uh... Uh, we do not require this, uh, eligibility, do we have an alternative method in which to improve or, or a system to ensure that those occupying salary grades, uh, career executive service, uh, position level, salary grade twenty-five and higher, to be in a constant state of improving themselves, their managerial capacity, as well as being assessed by, uh, a board that ensures that they, uh, that they are effective in, in their mandate?
Mr. Speaker, um, two, uh, two points of clarification before I directly answer the question. Number one, the fact that third level positions are not mentioned in the civil service code does not, uh, deprive civil, uh, third level civil service, uh, civil service eligibles from applying in positions salary grade twenty-five and above. So, that is not a point against them. In fact, they are more than welcome, Mr. Speaker, to apply in position, in high positions in the Bangsa Moro bureaucracy. Second, Mr. Speaker, um, the, the CES board, which the good gentleman has clarified, uh, is the, that institution that provides, uh, professional development for, uh, CES eligibles, uh, is the one that classifies whether a position belongs to, uh, CES, to Ceso. So, Mr. Speaker, even in the national government, there are positions of a high salary grade but are not classified as Ceso. So, Mr. Speaker, that is going to be the same case in the Bangsa Moro. These positions, high, uh, ranking they may be, and requiring more qualifications from their, uh, position holders as they are, are still not, uh, Ceso positions or third level positions, Mr. Speaker. are still not uh, CESSO positions or third level positions, Mr. Speaker. So in that case, Mr. Speaker, the question about how to ensure that our high-ranking uh, bureaucrats in the Bangsa Moro bureaucracy is, are able to uh, develop themselves professionally by, by manner of trainings and other professional enrichment uh, methodologies, that is the same as what they do in the national civil service. They are still required to um, attend uh, certain number of hours of training in a given year. And that is still going to be, and that is uh, also something that is provided clearly in the civil service code. That is before us now, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, um, uh, well, I appreciate the comments of the proponent. Uh, my point actually was the important role of the uh, CES board in ensuring a continuous effective performance and continuous improvement of executives. So, my query was, uh, in the absence of a CES board, what alternative system can we introduce to the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code that will do the same function?
Mr. Speaker, we are not creating our own version of uh, S- uh, CESSO here in the Bangsa Moro. But all of the positions of a certain rank are still uh, subject to certain qualification standards, which require the el- uh, the, uh, the trainings, the educational requirements, that are, and the experience that are necessitated by the performance of the functions of their given position. What uh, what office will perform functions that are going to be similar to the CESSO, Mr. Speaker? Uh, earlier, we have mentioned the other, the, the new institution that we are going to uh, empower in the civil service code that will provide those kinds of trainings to our bureaucrats. And many other opportunities that are, I think, available to the national government in terms of uh, professional and career development are also available to the uh, to the civil servants of the Bangsa Moro.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I'm saying this al-also um, to state that I agree with the comment of Minister Iqbal in the Consolidated Matrix, where Minister Iqbal mentioned that the non-applicability of the requirements for CES for third eligibility level positions will indeed open opportunities to many Bangsa Moro aspirants. However, it can also close the doors to more competent and eligible applicants. Selection may become susceptible to outside influence and interventions, and may have a repeat of the lapses in the past administrations. Um, I agree with this statement, Mr. Speaker, in the sense while I really support that uh, all the third level positions be filled up. Um, but uh, as stated here by Minister Iqbal, it will also close doors to um, highly effective, high potential, hard-working um, eligible applicants that uh, can serve in these very important, very influential, and very um, um, critical positions, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I'm not sure if there was a question in that uh, statement. I'm sorry if I didn't catch it, Mr. Speaker.
Um, I think uh, if we're going to convert it into a question, Mr. Speaker, uh, as stated by Minister Iqbal, there are two directions that we are moving. In the current civil service code of the Bangsa Moro, we're doing away with the CES eligibility, mainly to provide opportunities to Bangsa Moro uh, applicants and aspirants. However, the other uh, side to that is that we also deprive the highly competent, highly effective, and hard-working uh, applicants to be positioned. So, in short, in this uh, two directions that Minister Iqbal mentioned, then we are deciding to uh, just accept the o-uh, open, provide opportunities to the Bangsa Moro and closing the doors to uh, the very highly competent um, hard-working uh, professionals in the Bangsa Moro.
Uh, so again, a-again, Mr. Speaker, uh, civil service, they are not, uh, even if the positions in the Bangsa Moro bureaucracy are not ca- classified as third level positions, are not uh, prevented from applying to these positions, that's number one. Number two, as uh, as the eligibility adheres to the person, they're uh, they're occupying a position that is no longer classified as third level position, as in the case of the BARM uh, civil servants, does not prevent them from um, going to the CESB uh, uh, organized trainings. Mr. Speaker, my point here is, we are only talking about the positions in the BARM bureaucracy. We are not talking about the uh, people who we are expecting to occupy these positions. What we're saying is that there are no third level positions in the BARM bureaucracy, but there may be occupan- occupants of those positions who have certain eligibility's that go beyond, above and beyond what are required by the qualification standards spelled out in the civil service uh, for the Bangsa Moro.
Oh, okay, uh, I think uh, much has been said on the career executive, Mr. Speaker. Although uh, uh, my recommendation is for us to be able to provide an alternative mechanism to have continuous uh, assessment and continuous training uh, for the competency of uh, of uh, higher level uh, um, positions, Mr. Speaker. Because uh, as we know, the, the requirement for um, managerial and executive officials, which is the third classification in the Bangsa Moro, is just five years' experience and uh, around one hundred twenty hours of training. So, I do hope that before this civil service code is approved, that we will have that mechanism. My other point, Mr. Speaker, is as regards uh, the, the Madaris teachers, is uh, if we have uh, uh, provided for the um, means of uh, for their, uh, we have provided for their uh, qualifications and uh, for their, the requirements for their appointment and qualifications and for their eligibility, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, Article seventy-eight of the current bill um, provides that uh, that it's the Bangsa Moro Education Code, which will spell out the qualification standards for the Madaris teacher. And it uh, tasks the MBHTE to coordinate with the CSC for the BARM for the, uh, for the spelling out of the details therein.
Mr. Speaker, during, during the committee hearing or on a forum, this was raised. And uh, when we were asking for the draft of the Education Code, they were also, they were also not very um, clear on this. So uh, what prevents us from including already the proposal, uh, the, the one that is being proposed in the Bangsa Moro Education Code to be integrated in the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code?
Mr. Speaker, I believe that uh, there's a technical working group that is working on the enhancement of the Education Code. Some of our colleagues are part of that uh, technical working group under the Committee on Education. And I believe, if my recollection, recollection serves me right, that a lot of provisions are uh, focused on madrasa education. And it can, in fact, uh, discuss the details on the qualification standards for the Madaris teacher in those provisions. While it is true that nothing prevents us, as this is also a law that is to be enacted by the parliament, to include that, uh, those details in this uh, civil service code, but uh, the position of the proponents is that it is better served uh, if discussed uh, holistically in the Education Code, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, um, it says here, um, in our proposed bill that the Civil Service Co-Commission shall promote gate rules and regulations to set the standards for their qualifications, appointment, and promotion for in the Bangsa Moro Education Code or on the recommendation of the Bangsa Moro Government. Um, I was hoping, Mr. Speaker, that actually the Education Code is already in the uh, in the late stages of its uh, uh, of its refinement. And I think many of, there, there has been extensive, extensive consultations. And uh, perhaps it would be more uh, supportive for the Madaris teachers, and not only the Madaris teachers, actually, Mr. Speaker, as well as the Asatids teachers and the Arabic teachers, Mr. Speaker, to have their um, um, an affirmative action to already provide uh, for the qualifications, appointments, and promotions here, so that it will be the Bangsa Moro Government that uh, that recommends to the Civil Service Commission, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, the, the qualifications, appointments, and promotions. Otherwise, Mr. Speaker, what is the purpose of the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code? If we're going to throw it back to the Civil Service Commission Nacional?
So, Mr. Speaker, uh, first on the point of including it here, I think we have made it clear that um, we, we find that it will serve, uh, it will uh, do the the requirements of the qualification standards for Madaris teachers, uh, greater justice if those are called out and those are spelled out in the Education Code, which can discuss it lengthily, given that it's the code that is devoted to the education system of the Bangsa Moro. Second, Mr. Speaker, as in any other position, including in the national government, when we're talking about technical positions, uh, which uh, includes the uh, uh, the uh, teaching personnel of madrasa education, it is really the process that it's the agency which uh, comes up based on law or their own uh, or their own estimation, what the qualification standards should be for the teacher. So that is what is going to happen. It's the MBHTE which will, based on the Education Code, that is going to be passed, Insha Allah. It's the MBHTE which comes up with a proposed QS for the Madaris teachers. And by process, it will submit that uh, QS to the CSC for its approval. For its approval. And once that is approved, it's the QS that will be posted by the MBHTE for vacancies for this kinds of position, Mr. Speaker.
Do you have further inquiries, MP Loong?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, I'd just like to uh, um, point out that during the dialogues, Mr. Speaker, one um, way to help the uh, Madaris teachers, the Asatids teachers, and the Arabic teachers, is to define a new uh, position, Mr. Speaker, that is not um, uh, present or that is unique to the Bangsa Moro. Because well, the, the reason why our uh, Madaris teachers had difficulty as regards eligibility before, is that their positions are equated to teacher one, teacher two, which is based on the current DBM position description. So, my hope, uh, and I, I kept repeating this in the committee hearings, is that here in the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code, we already define what are the Madaris teachers, what uh, who are the Asatids teachers, which are higher in level than the Arabic teachers, and then the Arabic teachers with their proposed qualifications and appointments. That way, it will have a stronger basis, Mr. Speaker. Because if we're just going to depend it on the Education Code, who then will submit it to the civil service? And the civil, Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code did not provide for it, then essentially, we have uh, given up our rights to support and help this uh, Madaris, Asatids, and Arabic teachers, who are in the thousands, Mr. Speaker, who I think through a provision in this Article seventy-five, we can actually proactively um, make an affirmative action to define it. That way, the, the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code provides for its qualification, appointment, and promotion, defines new positions, and then supported also by the Bangsa Moro Education Code. That way, in statutory construction, Mr. Speaker, it's stronger, rather than it is just defined in the Bangsa Moro Education Code.
Mr. Speaker, just to be clear, uh, we really appreciate the good intention of the good gentleman in this intervention. But to make it clear, number one, the intention is similar. We are also envisioning a scenario where, where uh, unique positions uh, that are available to Madaris and the Madaris teachers, the Asatid, are going to be available in the Bangsa Moro educational system. So we are not um, um, disregarding their current situation where it's the regular positions for teachers that are being made available to them. So the vi- the vision, the intention is the same, that uh, in the Bangsa Moro region at least, there are specific positions intended and meant for uh, educators in the Madaris educational system. Number two, Mr. Speaker, whether we put those qualification standards here in the uh, Civil Service Code or in the Education Code, once it reaches the parliament, the process is going to be the same. It's still going to be a qualification standards drafted and uh, formulated by the MBHTE, but still subject to submission to the CSC before it can be used for the uh, publication, the posting of vacancies under those positions. So, it really doesn't uh, make much of a difference in the process, Mr. Speaker. It's still going to be the CSC that approves the QS for these technical uh, possessions, including the Madaris and Madaris teachers. But it will be the MBHTE, once the Education Code sets the legal framework for the qualification standards, which will come up with this uh, recommendation for approval of the CSC, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Your Honor, MP Loong, do you have other concerns apart from Madaris? We can move the discussion forward.
Okay, tha- that would be all, Mr. Speaker, and uh, I thank you. I thank the proponent and the speaker.
Thank you very much, uh, MP Loong, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Some of the members have already waived their privilege to interpolate. And so we move we, to the next interpolator, MP Mujahid. Next, to, to follow, MP Mujahid, MP Damdaman Latif, MP Makaraya, Alamiya, and Enderez Rasul. MP Mujahid, please proceed, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, a-actually, my concerns uh, was already uh, raised by MP Don Loong while ago, Mr. Speaker, the Madaris uh, teachers, which in my knowledge that uh, uh, there is uh, a little confusion uh, from my end. But uh, uh, because it's, it was explained thoroughly by the uh, proponent, Mr. Speaker. Uh, for me, Mr. Speaker, uh, it surprised me. Hmm, I, I just want to uh, um, signify, Mr. Speaker, that uh, or manifest, Mr. Speaker, that I really support this, the, this proposed uh, bill. And uh, uh, I'm with the, those who are urging for the immediate approval of this civil service uh, code. Uh, however, Mr. Speaker, in the period of amendment, I have some short of uh, uh, amendment or points to be raised during, uh, in the due time, Mr. Speaker. So, that's obvious, Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, MP Mujahid. Uh, we now recognize the lady from Togaya. MP Damdaman Latif.
Thank you very much. Uh, Salam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Alaykum, Mr. Salam.
I'd, I'd like to ask some questions, only for clarificatory questions, as well as for a purpose of uh, compromise amendments.
Please proceed, MP Latif.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to ask, uh, what are the powers of the parliament in enacting the civil service law under the Bangsa Moro organic law?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, the parliament was empowered to uh, enact a law that governs the civil servants within the Bangsa Moro, provided, and the only limitation is that they are in accordance with national laws. And implicitly, that they do not um, contravene the constitutional mandate of the Civil Service Commission.
Uh, specifically, I would like to ask, what powers? what powers does the Bangsa Moro Parliament have in enacting the Civil Service Law? Meaning what are the uh, powers that it can enact, or what are the powers that it can uh, provide for in the Civil Service Law?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, per the relevant section in the BOL, the Civil Service Law that the Bangsa Moro Parliament enacts shall govern, if I may quote, "The conduct of civil servants, the qualifications for non-elected positions, uh, adopt the merit and fitness system, and protect civil service eligible in various government positions, including GOCs with original charters in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region." And it also uh, clarifies that the Bangsa Moro Government shall have disciplinary authority over its own officials and employees.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to ask, how do you define qualification standards?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, qualification standards include those uh, educational requirements, training, experience, and eligibility that a position holder must have, must comply with to be an uh, to be a to hold that position, Mr. Speaker.
I would like to ask, in terms of eligibility, what are the three different eligibilities that are provided under the national law?
Uh, civil service, uh, professional and sub-professional, and the uh, career executive service eligibility, Mr. Speaker.
So there are three kinds of eligibilities? Am I correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So, for the three kinds of eligibility, what levels are we pertaining to, Mr. Speaker?
The first and second, Mr. Speaker. The first level and second level, Mr. Speaker.
I'm asking, what are the three kinds of eligibility and what are its corresponding levels?
Uh, first level, Mr. Speaker, uh, first level eligibility is are uh, those that are not covered by bar, board, special laws, and other special eligibilities as may be determined by the Civil Service Commission. So I'm reading, Mr. Speaker, the relevant articles or the relevant provisions in the Civil Service Code. Uh, on the second level eligibility, they uh, are uh, those that are appropriate for appointment to positions in the second and first level. And the third level eligibility, Mr. Speaker, is the requirement for career executive uh, uh, service board.
Mr. Speaker, uh, I, thank you very much for that. I'd like to ask again, the proponent, you said a while ago that the powers includes the power to legislate on the conduct, on the qualification standards, the power to adopt merit and fitness, the power to protect civil service eligible in Bangsa Moro. Does that include the power to protect third-level eligibilities?
Mr. Speaker, uh, again, as we've mentioned, the non-inclusion of third-level positions in the civil service of the Bangsa Moro does not deprive third-level eligible or the civil uh, career executive service eligible from the protections, from the benefits that adhere to them as such eligible.
So, Mr. Speaker, I would like to ask, is there any law that prohibits the Bangsa Moro Government or the Bangsa Moro Parliament in providing for a third-level position? I'm saying third-level position.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, um, since it's the CES Board that defines which positions are third-level, I am afraid that we cannot, by this law, substitute our uh, uh, judgment uh, over that of the CES Board, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much for that. I would like to ask, how was the CES Board created? By virtue of what law?
By presidential decree, I believe, one, Mr. Speaker.
So by virtue of a law?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
I would like to ask, how is the Bangsa Moro Organic Law created?
Mr. Speaker, it's a national law as well.
National law. What is the statutory construction with regards to later laws?
Mr. Speaker, so I think I might, if I may, cite two rules of statutory construction that is applicable in this case. Number one, uh, the later law definitely uh, um, uh, prevails over any earlier law. But equally material in the discussion, Mr. Speaker, is that statutory construction rule on a law that delves in specificities will prevail over a law or a provision that deals with generalities. In this case, Mr. Speaker, the subject presidential decree, the national law that creates a CES Board, is specific and directly deals with the uh, the career executive service uh, board and the, its mandate. Uh, for the BOL, Mr. Speaker, a national law of later enactment, it deals with the host of powers and authorities of the Bangsa Moro Government. Uh, by statutory construction, Mr. Speaker, and we leave it to the Supreme Court to make a decisive uh, uh, ruling on this matter should the opportunity arise. Um, the earlier law is, may be read as an exception to the uh, to the generality of the provision in the BOL.
Do you agree with me that the earlier law, that the later law gives the power to the Parliament to enact a civil service law that provides for its own qualification standards with its own eligibilities, with its own merit and fitness system, with its own adoption of conduct, Code of Conduct, with its own disciplinary authority? Is that not more specific for you?
That is correct, Mr. Speaker, and that is, uh, if I may add, that is qualified, that legislative authority is qualified, that it be consistent, and does not contravene existing national laws, including the aforementioned PD number one.
The existing national law for that matter, is it not the Bangsa Moro Organic Law that fully devolves the power to provide for qualification standards, to provide for eligibilities, to provide for Code of Conduct, practically all aspects of civil service law?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, subject to any exemptions already provided by uh, any other law, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, in the enactment of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, we submit that in the category of laws, the Bangsa Moro Organic Law is sui generis. It is not even comparable to a national law, considering that it passed the plebiscite. So are we now uh, surrendering that categorization, that it is a sui generis? Therefore, it is an exception to all of this category of laws, because it's higher than ordinary laws?
I do not um, uh, oppose that position, Mr. Speaker. I do one of the people who would argue that it is in fact a sui generis law, uh, a matter unto its own right. However, Mr. Speaker, the provision that we are discussing uh, clearly uh, reserves uh, in the delegation of legislative authority such matters that are already discussed in national law. So in this case, Mr. Speaker, despite the station of the BOL as a law that ranks higher than other national laws by reason of it being subjected to a plebiscite, to a plebiscite, um, the, the clear uh, text and the intention of the law is to uh, reserve some matters of civil service uh, from the legislative authority of the Bangsa Moro Parliament.
Mr. Speaker, is the proponent aware that aside from that in the CES Board, there are also other categories of third-level eligibilities that does not require presidential appointment?
Will the lady from Togaya kind enough to restate again her question?
Mr. Speaker, I'm asking the proponent if she is aware that there are also other existing third-level eligibilities that does not require presidential appointment under the CES law or CES Board, under PD number one?
Lady proponent?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I believe that PD number one clarifies that it should be a presidential appointee, however, uh, in the course of the discussions in the, in the last uh, two days, has been uh, established that a jurisprudence exempting the uh, school division superintendent from that requirement, particularly in the uh, autonomous region, has been called out.
Mr. Speaker, I'm asking because there are three kinds of CES uh, eligibilities. Number one, that was mentioned in Pangandaman case, the superintendent eligible for the Department of Education. Number two, the CES, the career executive service or uh, executive service. And then number three, the Ceso, the career executive service officers, that requires the attestation of the president being a presidential appointee. So I'm asking, Mr. Speaker, if considering that there are no presidential appointees in the case of the Bangsa Moro, because the, the one who appoints the managerial positions are the chief minister, can we not now consider the two other categories as third-level eligible?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, if I may clarify also, uh, that the first uh, two uh, items enumerated by our colleague refers to jurisprudence. And if I understand the reading of those decisions correctly, Mr. Speaker, it was national, the national law that was applied to the qualification standards of those positions by reason of the absence of a regional law governing civil service. So it was the reason why the Supreme Court in those specific instances held that uh, since the national law states that those positions require position holders to be uh, uh, career executive service eligible, then that requirement was applied to them despite them being not uh, appointees of the president. And, Mr. Speaker, we can argue the entire day of how that uh, decision, the ruling itself, and the obiter in that ruling affects what we do here in the uh, Parliament in enacting and deliberating on the Civil Service Code for the Bangsa Moro. But I think, Mr. Speaker, the proponents have made it clear that um, in this Civil Service Code, we are not contemplating third-level positions in the Bangsa Moro bureaucracy, but we are not depriving uh, those eligibles from availing of the benefits and advantages that uh, adhere or inherit to them by reason of their eligibility.
Mr. Speaker, what law is, is uh, the superintendent eligible? Uh, that what does, what law does it pertain to, Mr. Speaker, if she is aware?
Uh, before uh, MP Basman will respond, may I again ask uh, the lady from Togaya, are all these questions you have uh, cover?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, because-
Yeah, cover around the issue of third-level eligibility?
Uh, no, speak, no, because at the end of this, I would like to ask a compromise proposition on this matter.
Okay, alright. MP Basman?
Mr. Speaker, it's RA 91 55 of the, or the Governance in Education Act that provides that the superintendent should be third-level eligible, which does not require a presidential appointee, appointment. Therefore, Mr. Speaker, as legislators, as the one who are given the power under the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, we are free to enact, to put in our law, that same kind of eligibility. There is no law that prohibits us, because in that case itself, the Supreme Court that says that absent a law that requires eligibility for third-level position, then this law shall govern, then this uh, uh, exception shall govern. So in that case, Mr. Speaker, by point of reasoning, now as the Bangsa Moro Position Authority exercising legislative power, we can enact and put that in our law that third-level uh, level positions, or even second-level positions, require a certain form of eligibility that is different from the second eligibility that is for ordinary professional services.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, just to clarify, and uh, we are ready to listen at the period of amendments for any such compromised positions on the relevant provisions. But just to clarify that point, that the law that uh, mandates or requires that holders of SDS and ASDS positions have uh, career executive service eligibilities, also provide that it's the president that appoints them, hence the, their uh, third-level uh, position classification. It is only, it was also discussed, the same was also discussed in the cited jurisprudence, and it was only because it was the arm, that uh, armed governor which appointed the uh, the subject uh, SDS appointee, uh, which became the that is, that was why it became an issue. But everywhere, elsewhere in the country, it's the president that appoints uh, those um, uh, the holders of those positions. And in a later case, um, it's uh, it states, if I may-
We, we will, we will allow MP Basman to finish her remarks.
Uh, it was clear in a later case in Buena versus Benito in 2014, that uh, that the Supreme Court did not overturn a ruling that states that the CES, the career executive service, covers presidential appointees only. It was only, again, as I mentioned, the reason, uh, the reason it became an issue is because it happened in the arm where it's the governor at that time which issued the appointment. But elsewhere in the country, uh, it was not a, uh, it was not an issue of who the appointing power is and the character of their positions being third-level, because it's the president that appoints them.
Mr. Speaker, in that case, in the, in the very same case, it was stated that absent a regional law for that matter, this provision, this interpretation of the Supreme Court holds, meaning at that time, that the regional governor is the one who appointed the civil, the superintendent, it equated it to the president, because it's the president under other jurisdiction that appoints the superintendent. In the case of the Bangsa Moro, since we are a sub-national government, we have our own ministries, equivalent to cabinet secretaries, cabinet departments. Then it is by point of reasoning that it is the chief minister equivalent to the appointing authority that is pertaining to the president that appoints third-level executives in the Bangsa Moro. So that's the reasoning there, in the absence of a regional law. So now we are enacting a regional law. We are at the freedom to put that there. However, if they do not want to yield uh, that proposition, there's also another category of third-level eligible, the CES, the career executive service uh, uh, executive eligibles. In the roster of eligibles that are not appointed by the president, but they are protected by law because they are holding third-level eligibilities. Now, if we remove that in the equation, what substitute can we hold? Because that very important uh, eligibility is the highest that a civil servant can aspire for, because it connotes excellence in service. It connotes that it has the leadership competence to steer governance forward because of the, the training, the examination, the education- because of the training, the examination, the education and experience required. It's higher in the categories than the second level. So, Mr. Speaker, I propose that since there is no prohibition for this parliament to create its own Bangsa Moro Executive Service Board, because the CES Board anyway was created under PD number one, a law, national law, we can create, I propose, our own Bangsa Moro Executive Service Board covering our own third-level eligibles for our own third-level positions, which takes it away from the CES Board. That is my proposition, Mr. Speaker.
Well, the lady can properly introduce her proposal in the period of amendment. But I heard the proponents already guaranteed the chamber that they are open to any proposals that would improve the current version of the draft.
Last question, Mr. Speaker, this is very pertinent for the question on the qualifications of the Mujahidins.
Please proceed, MP Dambdaman Latif.
Uh, why is the hiring of qualified Mujahidins only applicable during the transition period?
Mr. Speaker, we talked about the Mujahidin provision.
The provision on Mujahidin?
Article 306 of the code. Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker, it is classified as a transitory provision, but it does not apply only during the transition period regardless of the length of the transition period. It is transitory in nature, meaning, um, um, it's one of the things that we apply from now until, uh, the Mujahidin and the Mujahidad that are the subject of the special provision are able to, um, acquire the necessary experience and the necessary training while in the Bangsa Moro bureaucracy.
In the second, uh, Mr. Speaker, in the second paragraph of Article 306 of the code, it says that the appointment under this provision shall be valid for 12 months, renewable for three times. Does this mean that ineligible or not-eligible Mujahidins without eligibility can only be hired for three years?
Mr. Speaker, actually, if we do not have this kind of a provision, they will not even be able to enter the civil service of the Bangsa Moro. But by reason of this, they have at least four years because the provision mentions three renewals of the temporary appointment. They have four years to be hired in the bureaucracy and that same length of time is their opportunity to complete their required eligibilities for their positions.
Mr. Speaker, what happens to them after three years if they were not able to comply with that eligibility requirement?
Mr. Speaker, uh, because this transitory provision is, uh, uh, beneficence to our Mujahidin and Mujahidad in recognition of their service to our people, they are given that time exempting them from the regular application of our strict civil service rules, whether in the national or in the regional level, as to the possession of certain qualifications for them to be appointed to these positions. Um, in that length of period, if they are not able to comply with the requirements, then, um, then the usual rules for civil service, which requires that all position holders are holders of the eligibilities, the qualification standards that are required in the position will apply to them already.
So, they will be removed from service?
This, Mr. Speaker, are temporary appointments. So, upon the expiration of their temporary appointments, renewed for a maximum of three times, they will no longer be qualified for renewal of their temporary appointment.
Uh, what is the basis for that, Madam, uh, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, temporary appointments have a maximum length of one year by civil service laws.
Civil service laws? So, in this...
And the Ora Ora, Mr. Speaker.
In the Ora Ora, not the civil service law because if that's the case, then we can provide for... Can we provide for a silent provision on this matter? That it will not just be during the transition period?
Mr. Speaker, uh, it does not say that it is only valid during the transition period. The reference to the transition period is with respect the Central Committees of the MLF and the MNLF in determining who in their roster will qualify to avail of this provision. But the length of service as temporary appointees of the Mujahidin and the Mujahidad is not limited to the transition period.
So, can we remove the word during the transition period legally?
Mr. Speaker, if we remove that, then there is no, um... It's only, Mr. Speaker, the length of the period of time within which the Central Committees of this Revolutionary Front are asked to determine who among their Mujahidin and Mujahidad can avail of this provision. So, we, as much as we want to have this provision realized and operationalized as soon as possible, that period of submission of the names is being provided here, Mr. Speaker.
So, if after the transition period, this no longer holds true?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, it's a transitory provision, so it's really a temporary measure so that we do not leave our Mujahidin and Mujahidad behind in our forming of the Bangsa Moro bureaucracy inception.
Last question, Mr. Speaker. Uh, it was also a question posed by a fellow MP who said she has to leave because she has to pray for Ash Wednesday. Uh, she asked that is there a reprository?
You're referring to MP Susana Anayatin?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I'm so sorry, but I have to ask. Is there a reciprocity?
Reciprocity.
Reciprocity. Sorry, Mr. Speaker. Is there a reciprocity provision provided for in the Civil Service Code? Reciprocity in terms of acceptance of third-level eligibles coming from the other outside the Bangsa Moro? And at the same time, if our eligibles here are also accorded the same respect by other jurisdiction?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I think I understand now. Reciprocity rules, I understand, are, I believe, are principles of international law. That's why I got confused. But if the question is about the eligibility of Bangsa Moro civil servants being recognized outside of the territorial jurisdiction of the Bangsa Moro, definitely, Mr. Speaker, we are all under the same Civil Service Commission. We are all being run under the same rules. We have, as my fellow proponent has mentioned, certain leeways in certain unique aspects of our civil service. But on the whole, Mr. Speaker, we are still civil servants of the Philippine Republic.
In other words, you can be hired anywhere, not necessarily within?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Alright.
So, in that case, Mr. Speaker, if, for example, a position that outside the Bangsa Moro is considered third-level eligible comes in here or goes out of the Bangsa Moro, but she just carries second-level eligibility and she insists on being hired on a third-level eligibility outside, she cannot legally do so because she only possesses second-level eligibility in the Bangsa Moro. So, would that not prejudice our civil servants in the Bangsa Moro?
Mr. Speaker, again, the absence of third-level positions in the Bangsa Moro bureaucracy should not and does not prevent our civil servants from aiming higher in terms of their qualifications as individuals. So, if they so wish, if they have aspirations of being future holders of the third-level positions, then as individual public servants, they are free to, um, get themselves the necessary eligibility.
But, Mr. Speaker, they cannot be afforded the same respect because outside, they will be carrying a second-level eligibility, but outside, that is cautiously considered a third-level eligibility, thereby creating a legal anomaly wherein that position, that very same position that the third-level eligibility outside Bangsa Moro is carried by those civil servants, but for the Bangsa Moro, they will be discriminated because they're just carrying second-level eligibility.
In fact, Mr. Speaker, the fact that we are not creating here our own separate career executive service board, which confers that kind of an eligibility, which exclusively confers that kind of an eligibility, means that everybody who is a career executive service eligible in the Bangsa Moro is of the same rank, so the same level because the same institution granted them that eligibility. So, I don't think there is going to be, uh, discrimination because it's their location that is different from, let's say, somebody who got, uh, who is hired in another region in the country, but it's the same career executive service board that conferred upon them that eligibility.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to, yes, I would like to clarify that when you go outside the Bangsa Moro jurisdiction, you go outside Bangsa Moro, those positions carrying a division chief above career and managerial executive, they are third-level. But when you go out, you are carrying with you, as she says, it inherits in the person the eligibility, only a second-level eligibility, notwithstanding that you have been an executive working for 15 years and you'll still be carrying a second-level eligibility, which I said will not protect, will not protect eligibilities in the Bangsa Moro when in fact, that is our foremost duty to protect civil service eligibilities under the Bangsa Moro organic law, Article 39. That is my submission, Mr. Speaker, and we will propose amendments. Thank you very much.
You will not, you don't no longer have to respond to that, that's her position. Thank you very much, MP Dambdaman Latif. Um, we will finish all those interpolators so that tomorrow we will proceed with the amendments. Uh, next to interpolate, Majority Leader, would you like to address the chamber? What's the pleasure of the Majority Leader?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I've already prepared for dinner in case we proceed until we finish the...
Dinner?
Yes, yes, we prepared for dinner. So, the next interpolator will be the...
Yes, the gentleman from Bubung Lano Dusur, MP Makaraya. Please proceed, your honor.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. I have short clarificatory questions. Will the proponent allow me to proceed?
Oh, gladly, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker. We have just experienced the termination of the provisional teachers throughout the BARM. Uh, Later if, under page two, page 32, it provides, "Appointees to teaching positions under provisional status shall undergo a provisional period for not less than one year from the date of the original provisional appointment." My question is, what is the wisdom behind granting appointees to teaching positions under provisional teachers to undergo provisional period for not less than one year?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, for ease of reference, may I ask the gentleman what article number he is? Section, uh, yeah, article number.
The gentleman will cite specifically the particular article or section?
Article seven. Book two, chapter three. Article 51, Later if.
Uh, okay. Mr. Speaker, that is a provision that is taken in total from the Ora Ora.
From the Ora Ora?
Yes.
Uh... Second question, what is the position? What is the position of the proponent? Or what should be the position of the BARM government? In case there is revision of the Ora Ora? That affects the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Law?
I'm sorry, I did not catch the material word. In case there is a...
Revision or amendment on the National Civil Service Code that affects the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code?
Mr. Speaker, if you read the BOL, it states not only that we need to pass a Civil Service Code that is in accordance with existing national laws, but in the event that should a revision of the national laws occur and there are conflicting provisions with our Civil Service Code, it's the national law that will prevail. So, that is going to happen where our, uh, any provision in our Civil Service Code or any other law enacted by parliament in reference to the civil service will have to be affected by that revision.
Okay. My third question is that, uh, on the terms, on the definition of terms, uh, we have provided the definition of moral governance. Uh, may I ask the proponent if they confine or if they put limit to the definition of moral government under this code?
Mr. Speaker, this is also lifted elsewhere, which is an administrative code that we enacted here in the parliament.
So, Mr. Speaker, under this provision, with regards to the definition of terms of moral governance, it is tied up with the admin code?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that is correct.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, that's all.
Thank you, MP Makaraya. Uh, the last to interpolate is the minority leader, joining us via Zoom. MP, MP Alamiya?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Uh, and to the proponent, may I proceed with my interpolation, Mr. Speaker? My second round of interpolation.
Please proceed, MP Alamiya.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker. Um, I have questions, clarificatory questions, Mr. Speaker, with respect to provisions under Book Five of the Draft Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code. But prior to going to those provisions, these provisions under Book Five are very important because it talks about disciplinary action, jurisdiction of the appointing authorities and the disciplining authorities, jurisdiction of the Civil Service Commission, um, and substantial law, Mr. Speaker, as well as procedural law. But before I proceed with that, Mr. Speaker, I would like to concur with the line of questioning and the points that were made by MP Maysara Latif. As a last question, interpolation, Mr. Speaker, with respect to third-level civil service eligibility, I would like to ask the proponent, MP Ana Basman, Mr. Speaker, um, as to the statement that she made earlier and also it was made, it was a statement made by the other proponent, MP Raisa Jajuri, that there are no third-level positions in the BARM, Mr. Speaker. I would like to clarify if that is the stand, the official stand of the proponents, that there are no third-level positions in the BARM, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, by reason of the jurisprudence cited yesterday and today, the SDS and the ASDS are the only third-level positions in the BARM.
Without belaboring that, the fact that, um, based on this statement, Mr. Speaker, it is then not true that there are no third-level positions in the BARM. Would the proponent agree with me that there are third-level positions in the BARM?
So, if I may repeat, Mr. Speaker, by reason of jurisprudence, the SDS and ASDS positions existing in the BARM are third-level positions.
And, Mr. Speaker, would the proponent agree that jurisprudence, which are decisions of the Supreme Court, are considered also the law of the land?
That is the definition, Mr. Speaker, of jurisprudence.
And therefore, it appears that there are third... And therefore, it appears that there are third level positions in the BARM? Mr. Speaker, kung tatalagaluin ko po, isimplify po natin para matapos na po 'yung discussion. Kapag merong isang basket na punong-puno ng saging, pero meron din siyang laman na oranges, orange, siguro mga sampung orange, Mr. Speaker. At kung sasabihin natin na 'yung basket na 'yan ay basket ng mga saging, puro saging ang laman ng basket na 'yan, pero meron tayong nakikitang orange, hindi ba natin idideclar at aaminin na ang basket na ito ay may lamang saging at may lamang orange, Mr. Speaker? If we're going to discuss legally then, in the civil service in the BARM, therefore, even if we create a third category, which is also allowed at the national level, that there is, there is a first level position, there is a second level position, and that we would want to create a second level position with managerial or executive functions, but we refuse to include the third level position as a category, Mr. Speaker? How would the proponent explain this fact? It's very obvious na nakikita natin na hindi totoo na walang third level positions in the BARM, even if these third level positions, by jurisprudence, which is part of the law of the land, pertains to the Schools Division Superintendent and the Assistant Schools Division Superintendent? Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, I understand where the interpolator is coming from. I also understand, Mr. Speaker, that the facts of the cases cited in the jurisprudence will no longer be the reality of the region once the Civil Service Code is enacted. Those cases refer to situations where there is an absence of qualification standards set for positions that are considered third level positions at the national level. In the event of the enactment of the Civil Service Code of the Bangsa Moro, that is not going to be the case anymore. Mr. Speaker, it can also, it can even be argued that the Supreme Court was left with no choice but to apply national laws on the situation of those two specific cases. Once the Civil Service Code is enacted, once the Civil Service Code of the Bangsa Moro is enacted, should that situation again arise, then the Supreme Court will have a different, a new, an additional legal framework to which, upon which to base?
Hello? Your questions first because we are fixing the audio. Can you hear us on the Zoom, MP Laisa Alamiya?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, please continue. We apologize, there's something wrong with the audio. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, considering this, despite the fact that there are laws that are available at the national level under the Civil Service Commission, also the Administrative Code of the Philippines, the Revised Administrative Code under Section Eight, which provides for the classes of positions in the career service, and this has been defined and has been established for several decades now that there are the positions in the civil service pertain to three positions, the first level, second level, and third level positions. But the proponent, it appears, is not open to a compromise on how we are able to reconcile these provisions in the national level, provisions in laws that are passed by the national government, by Congress, with the desire of the proponents to at least recognize that there are third level positions in the BARM. How will this be implemented, Mr. Speaker? This notion that there are no third level positions in the BARM, how will this be operationalized? The moment that the Civil Service Code will be passed, does this mean that the appointment papers and the position description form of those who are occupying third level positions right now, who are permanent, whose positions are permanent, will their appointment papers and position description forms be revised to reflect that their positions are not third level positions? I would like to understand how will this come out, Mr. Speaker?
I think in practical terms, yes, Mr. Speaker.
I would like to request the proponent to reconsider and think about this. What you're going to do is to amend, revise, issue a new appointment paper to those civil servants in the BARM who have, who have been occupying third level positions and who are, who have passed third level eligibility. We need to distinguish third level positions from third level eligibility. Are we saying, Mr. Speaker, that all those currently who are occupying permanent positions, who have for several years proven themselves qualified and have actually occupied third level positions and with civil service eligibility, either CSEE from the Civil Service Commission or Career Executive Service from the CES Board, their position will now be downgraded, Mr. Speaker, to second level position with managerial and executive functions, Mr. Speaker? Is that how it's going to be operationalized?
I understand, Mr. Speaker, that that is an appeal from the good Minority Floor Leader, and we duly note that, and we will consider that, Mr. Speaker, at the proper time.
Do we have further questions?
I have further questions, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
So considering, Mr. Speaker, considering this, Mr. Speaker, since there are existing third level positions with occupants having third level eligibility, and they are not appointed by the president, Mr. Speaker, the requirement that a person who is appointed to a third level position with third level eligibility does not require appointment by the president, except for those positions that have been identified under the law creating the CES Board. But the Civil Service Commission also issues third level eligibility, Mr. Speaker, because there are third level positions that are not appointed by the president, as stated earlier by MP Maysara Latif, which is found in the Education Act of the national government, that also applies in the BARM, Mr. Speaker. I will make my proper proposed amendments, Mr. Speaker, when, when the time for amendments will come. With respect to reconciling, it only seems that they are contradicting, Mr. Speaker. Pero pwede po siyang ireconcile. Huwag po tayo kung ang gusto po ng proponent ay magcreate ng positions later na hanggang second level position lamang na merong managerial and executive functions, wala pong problema. Pero hindi po nating pwedeng i-deny na may oranges po dyan sa basket na 'yan. And these oranges are the third level positions, the occupants of the third level positions right now, who are permanent and who have third level eligibility. Hindi po nating pwedeng iset aside. We can recognize them and say that, yes, there is a third level position, period. And the eligibility for that is required is the third level eligibility, which can either be CSEE by the Civil Service Commission or CES by the CES Board, Mr. Speaker. I will make the proper amendments later on, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to proceed to do my next question, Mr. Speaker. And this is under Article Nine of Book One, Mr. Speaker. In, during the committee level, I made recommendations for changes here, but apparently these were not included by the committee. Under Article Nine, it defines the career service as characterized by three elements. Entrance based on merit and fitness, to be determined as far as practicable by competitive examinations. Second, opportunity for advancement to higher career positions. And third, security of tenure. This is the very language found in the civil service law, Mr. Speaker, at the national level, in the rules. However, the phrase "but does not apply to appointments to positions which are policy determining, primarily confidential, or highly technical" was added as a definition in the term, Article, in the Article Nine, the term for career service, Mr. Speaker. Now, my question is, with respect to number three, which says the Bangsa Moro career service shall include other positions in the BARM, period. These include Bangsa Moro Director General and other positions that may be created by the Bangsa Moro Parliament. May I know, Mr. Speaker, what is the basis for Article Nine, Paragraph Three? What is the legal basis for this, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, in the course of the enactment of the Administrative Code and defining the structure of all of our government agencies and instrumentalities within the region, certain positions have been created, and they are, they they comply with the three requirements for a position to be considered career service. So these are those positions, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, is it not absurd that you have a number three that says other positions in the BARM, period, which include Bangsa Moro Director General? How different is it? Because this talks about the career service, Mr. Speaker, which does not, is career service, but there is a colatilia to it. It is career service, but in the first element, it does not apply to appointments to positions which are policy determining and primarily confidential or highly technical. How do we reconcile this, Mr. Speaker, with the nature of the career service and the nature of the position of other positions in the BARM, such as the Bangsa Moro Director General, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, when we talk of the exemption, we should read this alongside the definition of non-career service.
Yes, Mr. Speaker?
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, we should read this, this colatilia on highly technical, policy determining, and and primarily confidential positions alongside the other relevant provisions. So, Mr. Speaker, I don't see how they conflict with each other by blanket, whole scale, including all of the positions created by the Bangsa Moro Parliament that are, that comply with the three requirements for them to be considered career service and reserving to other classifications those that are policy determining, primarily confidential, or highly technical. Some of them might be covered by other forms of appointment, Mr. Speaker, that are not career in nature, such as co-terminos appointments.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, if I may proceed, apologies to the proponent, MP Basman, just to cut short and, and make this faster. Article Eleven, Mr. Speaker, talks about non-career service, as mentioned by the proponent. And in the non-career service, in Article Eleven, under Paragraph Five, it talks about positions which are policy determining or primarily confidential, which appears to pertain to number three of Article Nine. And the element number one of Article Nine, which talks about entrance based on merit and fitness but does not apply to appointments to positions which are policy determining, primarily confidential, or highly technical. My question is, Mr. Speaker, this creates the absurdity that I was saying earlier. Which is which? Are the positions which are policy determining or primarily confidential non-career service or career service? Because both terms are included in the definition of career service and non-career service, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, if we're talking about the inclusion of the term policy determining in the article that defines career service, I think it's an exemption. Whereas in in the non-career service definition under Article Eleven, it's, it includes those positions. So really, Mr. Speaker, I don't see how they conflict with each other. The earlier provision exempts from the career service positions that are by nature policy determining, highly confidential. And in the next section, in the next article, it says that these positions are precisely non-career.
If that is the case, Mr. Speaker, then we should remove that definition, that element under the Article Nine on the definition of career service. Because it's, it's very clear that for career service positions, these are characterized by those three elements and does not pertain to appointments to positions which are policy determining, primarily confidential, or highly technical. And therefore, because that description of positions which are policy determining or primarily confidential are found under non-career service, these positions are non-career, Mr. Speaker, and they're not career positions.
Exactly, Mr. Speaker. So if we read the article on career service, it says the Bangsa Moro career service shall be characterized by entrance based on merit and fitness to be determined as far as practicable by competitive examinations, but does not apply to appointments to positions which are policy determining, primarily confidential, or highly technical qualifications.
May I ask why the definition of career service under element number one does not apply to appointments to positions which are policy determining, primarily confidential, or highly technical?
Mr. Speaker, so as supplemented by the next position, it provides that those positions are considered non-career. And in addition, Mr., in, if I may finish as well, in the... So, Mr. Speaker, I really don't see the, how that contradicts each other. When we talk about, when we mention policy determining, primarily confidential, highly technical, in the career service, we talk of exemptions. So we say that these are not career service positions. When you go to the next article, we say that they are non-career.
So, Mr. Speaker, if that is the case, Mr. Speaker, this, this is not about contradiction, but it creates an absurdity, Mr. Speaker, and a confusion, an ambiguity. If these positions, which are policy determining, primarily confidential, or highly technical, are considered non-career service, therefore, it shall suffice that the definition of non-career service will include that and the definition for career service will not include that statement, Mr. Speaker. And will the proponent, considering that the proponent agrees that these positions are non-career, would the proponent be open to an amendment of Article Nine and/or Article Eleven with respect to position? and/or Article eleven with respect to positions that are policy determining, primarily confidential, or highly technical, to make the language clear, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, it appears that we, the, the Interpellator and the proponents have a divergence in opinion on what constitutes absurdities or what causes confusions. But, Mr. Speaker, we are open to hearing proposed amendments to the bill on the table at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My next question still pertains to career service and non-career service. On paragraph again, number three, under Article nine, with respect to other positions that include Bangsa Muro Director General that may be created by the Bangsa Muro Parliament. If you look at the classification of the Bangsa Muro Career Service as defined in this draft Civil Service Code, each classification has an explanation why they're considered as career service. For example, open career positions for appointment which prior qualification to an appropriate examination is required. Second, closed career positions which are scientific or highly technical, and so on and so forth. There is an explanation. I would like to understand, Mr. Speaker, what is the explanation? What is the justification for including the statement, for including number three, other positions in the BARM? What is the reason why they are considered as career service, Mr. Speaker?
So, Mr. Speaker, as I mentioned earlier, they may be positions created by the Bangsa Muro Parliament in the course of its enactment of laws, creation of offices, et cetera. But if the good minority leader has a proposed language in order to make the language of this nomination parallel, then we are prepared to listen. At the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you to the proponent. My next question pertains to Book Five, Mr. Speaker. If I would like to refer to Book Five, if I may ask the proponent to check.
Yeah, with due respect, MP Alamiya, may we ask you to hold those questions for a while? In the meantime, that we, some of our members are requesting to pray for Maghrib. Maybe we can return, resume the deliberation. After a fifteen-minute break, some of our members here are requesting that we observe the Maghrib prayer first. So we call for a fifteen-minute break. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Session is done. We will continue the deliberation on Civil Service Code, the period of debate and interpolation. The good minority leader will restate again her question. MP Liza Alameya, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much to the proponent for answering the questions that I have asked earlier. I only have three articles more, Mr. Speaker. I will start with Article 184 on prohibition on detail or reassignment, Mr. Speaker. I would like to ask the proponent if the proponent is willing to be propounded with questions on Article 184?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed, MP Alameya.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under Article 184, it states that no detail or reassignment whatever shall be made within three months before any election unless authorized by the Comelec to the Bangsa Moro Electoral Office. Mr. Speaker, aside from the way the sentence has been constructed and the words that were used, Mr. Speaker, which can be changed later on if the proponent is willing to accept proposed amendments, I would like to know what is the basis for Article 184 which says that there is no detail or reassignment within three months before any election, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the basis is the Administrative Code EO292, meaning the National Administrative Code in Book 5, Chapter 8, Section 58, which reads “No detail or reassignment whatever shall be made within three months before any election.”
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Speaker. Has the proponent considered a decision, a resolution that has been issued by the Civil Service Commission and Bank in 2019, which follows what is found under Article 261H of the Omnibus Election Code, which is under BP Bilang 881, sorry, that talks about that talks about the prohibition, sorry, prohibition on the transfer or movement of officers and employees. It is not just the detail or the reassignment, but transfer, movement, and even appointment of any person in the civil service during the election ban. And under these rules in the Omnibus Election Code, it states that the prohibition for detail, reassignment, or appointment shall take place not just prior to the elections, but also after the elections, Mr. Speaker. Would the, and this pertains to the election period, and this happens every three years, Mr. Speaker. I think this is standard jurisprudence and also law with respect to elections, that for forty-five days before a regular election and thereafter, there shall be no appointments, details, or reassignment. Would the proponent be open to amending this provision? Because it does not have a basis as to the, it does not conform to what is the law with respect to elections and within the jurisdiction of a constitutional commission, the Comelec?
Mr. Speaker, again, this was lifted from the Admin Code, but if the interpolator wishes to expound on this and change the title of the article to cover all prohibitions in relation to the period of elections, then we are ready to listen during the period of amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My next question is on Article 187, and this in relation to Article 186 with respect to nepotism. And I am very glad that in the Civil Service Code of the BARM, in this draft code, the term nepotism is included and that it declares that all appointments that are made in favor of a relative of the appointing or recommending authority or the head or chief of the bureau or office or of the persons exercising immediate supervision over him or her are hereby prohibited. And this pertains to the third degree either of consanguinity or affinity. My question, first question with respect to nepotism, Mr. Speaker. Why is the word relative defined as only referring to the third degree of either consanguinity or affinity, as opposed to the definition in the regular laws on nepotism that talks about the fourth degree of consanguinity or of affinity?
Mr. Speaker, if the good minority leader can mention to us which law that is, it might be later, but we're only, we only base that definition, and it was only lifted from, again, the Administrative Code EO292 in Book 5, Chapter 8, Section 59, which reads exactly as it is reflected in this draft Civil Service Code.
I will be, thank you, Madam Proponent. I will be identifying the law, the later law, which is also found in jurisprudence and also in the Civil Service Commission's decisions with respect to the degree of consanguinity or affinity. But I would like to also, well, it is commendable that in the definition of nepotism, it, the jurisprudence on appointing authority has already been included, which includes not just the one who is appointing, but also the one who is recommending or the head or chief of the bureau or office or of the persons exercising immediate supervision. So this does not pertain only to those, to the appointing authority. Now, with respect to Article 187, Mr. Speaker, as to the exemptions on, from the rules on nepotism, which includes those who are employed in a confidential capacity, teachers, physicians, scientific and technology personnel, provided that it, in each particular instance, a full report shall be made to the CSC for BARM. In the third paragraph of Article 187, it says that “In order to give immediate effect to these provisions, cases of previous appointments which are in contravention hereof shall be corrected by transfer, and pending such transfer, no promotion or salary increase shall be allowed in favor.” And then there's no period, so it appears the sentence is incomplete. Second, I would like to know what is the legal basis, whether it's a national law, a constitutional law, or jurisprudence, why this provision has been included?
Mr. Speaker, this is again a direct lifting from the Administrative Code EO292. It is provided in that admin code exactly as it is reflected in the draft Civil Service Code. We note, however, Mr. Speaker, that since we are already operationalizing the ban on nepotism from, from the offing, since we have followed national civil service rules their own, this instance, in fact, will no longer happen. This alternative movement or human resource movement or action is no longer necessary because we do not foresee any approval of appointments prior to the enactment of the Civil Service Code that is covered by this paragraph, Mr. Speaker.
That's good to know, Mr. Speaker. Considering that, and that this was lifted word for word, although the sentence is not complete, from the old executive order, creating the Administrative Code at the national level, will the proponent be open to the proposal that this particular paragraph be removed? Because indeed, we have been in, in the Bangsa Moro, in the prior, the defact ARMM, and also in other parts of the country, nepotism is definitely not allowed, and it prohibited, and it is punishable by law. Will the proponent be open to a proposal to remove this last paragraph, Mr. Speaker?
At the appropriate time, Mr. Speaker, we are ready to listen to that proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My second to the last question is on Article 222 on construction. It states that “The provisions of Book 5 shall be liberally construed in order to promote their objective in obtaining a trust speedy and inexpensive disposition of administrative cases.” The second paragraph says that “The administrative hearing and investigation under this book, under the Civil Service Code of BARM, is not bound by the technicalities of law and procedure and the rules obtaining in the courts of law, provided the due process of law is not compromised.” May I know, Mr. Speaker, what is the basis for this provision, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, it is a reformulation of what is reflected in the 2017 RACs, which reads “Administrative investigations shall be conducted without strict recourse to technical rules of procedure and evidence applicable to judicial proceedings.” So it's a reformulation, Mr. Speaker, a relanguaging of that same provision found in the 2017 RACs.
Considering that, Mr. Speaker, is it not but proper, because this talks about jurisdiction and substantive law, and the jurisdiction of the Civil Service Commission, substantive law, and procedural law, wouldn't it be proper, Mr. Speaker, that we follow what is found in the national law's rules and regulations with respect to this, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, if the proposal is to revert to the language as exactly expressed in the 2017 RACs, then again, at appropriate time, we are ready to listen to that kind of proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. May I ask the proponent, Mr. Speaker, in the administrative proceedings that will be conducted based on the BARM Civil Service Code, what will be the quantum of proof that are necessary for finding, for a finding of guilt, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, it's going to be the same as in the standards of national law, which is substantial evidence, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Finally, again, on, on the penalties, penalties, still also on jurisdiction of the Civil Service Commission. Under Article 280, the administrative offenses and penalties, and it talks about grave offenses, nepotism is there, and also less grave, and then grave offenses that are punishable by suspension of six months and one day to one year. Under number four, it talks about inefficiency and incompetence in the performance of official duties. However, the guilty person may instead be punished by demotion, in which case he shall suffer diminution in salary corresponding to the next lower level, next lower in degree with the same salary step. My question, Mr. Speaker, with respect to the nepotism. I have not found any article in the Civil Service Code. It only identifies nepotism as an act that is prohibited and therefore is punishable. But I would like to know, with regard to nepotism, who will be the punished officials? Would it be both the appointed person and the appointing officials, Mr. Speaker?
It's the appointing authority, Mr. Speaker.
So the one who is appointed will not be punished?
The appointment of the appointee may be affected, but the punishment does not apply to him or her?
Considering this, Mr. Speaker, and this is substantive law, substantive law and procedural law, isn't it proper that these points will be included, are included in these provisions with respect to nepotism? As to who are punishable, who will be punished, and what the punishment will be?
At appropriate time, Mr. Speaker, we are ready to listen to that kind of a proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The, the paragraph next to nepotism is disloyalty to the Republic of the Philippines, including the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, and to the Filipino people, including the Bangsa Moro people. This is a very general description of a grave offense, Mr. Speaker, and it is not defined here what are the elements of disloyalty to the BARM and disloyalty to the Republic of the Philippines, and finally, disloyalty to the Filipino people, including the Bangsa Moro people. What are the parameters determining this act, Mr. Speaker? I believe the, the paragraph 11 is ambiguous, and it would be difficult to prove or even prosecute if there is such a case, or even for the person who is prosecuted, for him to defend himself, because the elements of this particular offense are not clear, Mr. Speaker. I would like to know, probably there, there are elements to this. What are the parameters in determining that such act is disloyalty to the Bangsa Moro people?
Mr. Speaker, I myself am unaware of the elements of this particular offense. However, Mr. Speaker, this is already contained in the 2017 RACs. This is a replication with a few additions of the same offense, which is considered grave, punishable by dismissal from service. What the RACs provides is simply disloyalty to the Republic of the Philippines and to the Filipino people. What we added for, as a form of enhancement, is the inclusion of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao and the Bangsa Moro people. So, Mr. Speaker, in practical terms, operationally, I would defer to how the Civil Service Commission treated this offense, how they were prosecuting, how they were dealing with the cases involving this specific offense.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Considering that, Mr. Speaker, these are grave offenses, which may cost the job of a civil servant, and we should be very clear. The term disloyalty as an offense, disloyalty to the Republic of the Philippines and the Filipino people, is clear, and there is jurisprudence for this. There are also elements for this in, in books written by legal luminaries. But with respect to disloyalty to the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, it appears that this is a new offense, Mr. Speaker, and we should be very clear about what are the parameters of this, what are the elements? When are you disloyal to the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao? And I, I don't have any proposal as to how this will be defined, Mr. Speaker, but I would really like for any of the proponents to explain how did this particular offense came to be? How did this came to be, and what are its elements, what are its parameters? So that we are clear about this. If I were the Civil Service Commission or the Supreme Court, I would have to try to sift through all of the jurisprudence and acts that have so far been committed, just to define what is disloyalty to the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, Mr. Speaker? If, if it is possible for any of the proponents to explain this particular offense, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, while I understand the desire of the good minority leader to be very clear about this particular offense, let us not remember that we are not talking let us not remember that we are not talking about criminal offenses here where the elements need to be spelled out for it to be valid. We are uh dealing with administrative offenses, which if you look at the rest of the enumeration are also matters that are simply enumerated and not, and whose elements are not defined. For example, gross insubordination, the term gross is not defined, what constitutes uh grossness of insubordination. So that is going to be the same way that this particular offense, on disloyalty to the Bangsa Moro people, the Bangs- uh disloyalty to the Bangsa Moro region, is to be treated both at the administrative level, at the level of the Civil Service Commission, and as it is elevated through the judicial system, Mr. Speaker. But again, if there is a proposal to qualify this, considering that it is only called, uh, taken directly from the RACs and only added the additional additional uh um matters of the Bangsa Moro region and the Bangsa Moro people, then we are ready to listen, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Actually, um, all of these offenses that are identified here are identified in the national laws, and they are defined. While the law would only say oppression, disgraceful and immoral conduct, um, uh habitual absentism, these have been defined, Mr. Speaker, and 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 the quantum of evidence as already uh mentioned earlier is only, the quantum quantum of proof is is only substantial evidence. But still, there are parameters to this, Mr. Speaker. The parameters for disloyalty, the Republic of the Philippines and the Filipino people are ver- are clear, Mr. Speaker, and there is jurisprudence for that. But what we need are um at least an explanation on the parameters for disloyalty to the BARM, which can be anything, Mr. Speaker. Of course, this is not a criminal case. This this talks about an administrative proceeding. But still, there are implications when someone is charged with disloyalty to the BARM uh just in case in the Civil Service Commission, where the quantum of proof is only substantial evidence, uh, Mr. Speaker. So I hope that um the proponent, not now, if they're able to come up with an explanation uh on this, so that we are very clear, we do not include, because we are lawmakers, Mr. Speaker. Uh, Mr. Speaker, I I do not intend to, um, it it is okay, Mr. Speaker, if the proponent is not able to explain the parameters of this, uh, this can be done later, uh, Mr. Speaker, if I may proceed with the second to the last.
If I may just uh make a last point on that, Mr. Speaker. And that, Mr. Speaker, is recognized even in an administrative order issued by the Office of the President, where uh citing um uh where it is discussed that the offense of disloyalty, and I quote, however, can be inferred from RA number sixty-seven thirteen, otherwise known as the Code of Conduct and Ethical Standards for Public Officials and Employees, the pertinent portion of which reads as follows, every public official and employee shall observe the following standards of personal conduct in the discharge and execution of official duties, including commitment to democracy, public officials and employees shall commit themselves to the democratic way of life and values, maintain the principle of public accountability and manifest by deeds a supremacy of civilian authority over the military, they shall at all times uphold the Constitution and put loyalty to the country above loyalty to the persons to persons of our party. And I was just informed that and yun nga po, sa administrative order number two-three-six, series of nineteen ninety-one, disloyalty po ay naidefine by the Office of the President. So, Mr. Speaker, if the minority minority leader wishes to um lift from that AO a definition of disloyalty, that uh they want to be included in the language of the Civil Service Code, at appropriate time, Mr. Speaker, we are there, ready to listen to that proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do not have any um opposition or any issue with respect to the definition of disloyalty to the Republic of the Philippines and the Filipino people, because it has been clearly defined in the Code of Ethics, in the laws governing civil servants. So that is beside the point, Mr. Speaker. My question is with respect to the phrase disloyalty to the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region and Muslim Mindanao, including the Bangsa Moro people. Um, that is some, this is new, this was inserted, and I would like to know what this pertains to. Um, I cannot propose any uh pro- uh amendment to this or any definition to what is disloyalty to the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region and Muslim Mindanao. And that is why I was asking the question, because I would like to understand the spirit and the intent for including this. Uh, the term Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region and Muslim Mindanao, uh, it it's okay if we include the Bangsa Moro people, because we are all Filipinos, but with respect to the BARM, which is an entity, uh, Mr. Speaker, how does one commit an act that is disloyal to the BARM as an entity, Mr. Speaker? That is what I would like to understand. If there is a definition for this or a description, um, that is fine, Mr. Speaker, but we should be very clear about this, Mr. Speaker.
Um, yes, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, I think the proponent has already made her statement clear regarding the definition. She cited few bail legal bases, including a presidential uh, uh, what's what was that, MPA Anambasman?
Administrative Order two-three-six.
Yes, so uh if we, we can humbly request the MPLA Mia, if we can move forward to other issues. She has other questions. Yes, uh, we can, we can settle that in the period of amendment. Yes, thank you, uh, MPLA Mia, please proceed.
Uh, I will proceed with uh my next que- second to the last question, Mr. Speaker. Uh, although I would like to reiterate my point that yes, it is very clear what is the definition of disloyalty to the Republic of the Philippines. That was identified by the proponent. What is not clear is what is disloyalty to the BARM, Mr. Speaker. Now, moving on to my next question. Um, in the same article, paragraph four, with respect to those who are punished uh grave offenses that are punishable by suspension of six months and one day to one year, under number four, it says that for inefficiency and incompetence in the performance of official duties, you are, you will be punished with the suspension for six months and and one day to one year. However, there is an added sentence here, Mr. Speaker. It says that the guilty person may instead be punished by demotion, in which case he shall suffer diminution in salary corresponding to the next lower in degree with the same salary step. May I, I would like to be clarified uh on this. Operationally, Mr. Speaker, how will this be implemented? We, is it a diminution in salary, next lower in degree, also a diminution of the position, Mr. Speaker, a change in the position? This is not, by the way, Mr. Speaker, provided for in the RACs, this uh alternative penalty of uh demotion with regards to um uh inefficiency and incompetence in the performance of duties. This is a new uh added element, uh, Mr. Speaker. What is the rationale for this?
Okay, Mr. Speaker, that is not something that is only seen in the Civil Service Code draft before us. It's also a direct lifting from the twenty seventeen RACs. So it reads the same as as is uh read in the Civil Service Code before us.
So this is found, I I would like to confirm that.
So the, it is found in the RACs, under Section fifty, Rule ten, letter C. The grave offense of inefficiency and incompetence in the performance of official duties may be punishable by demotion. In this case, the guilty person shall suffer diminution in salary corresponding to the next lower salary grade with the same salary step. So, Mr. Speaker, sorry, uh, considering, uh, Mr. Speaker, operationally, uh, I would assume that how it is being operationalized by the Civil Service Commission or its regional offices is the same way that we are going to do it here in the Bangsa Moro.
And that is, Mr. Speaker, if I may ask?
Please proceed, MPLA Mia.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I think how they do it is if there's a position, uh, one grade lower than that occupied by the erring public servant, then that position is the new um, the 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 air, the erring public servant will be demoted to that position. In the event that that is not uh possible, meaning there is no vacancy, then I think what they do is they um, they simply suffer the diminution in salary. One step lower than that uh prior to the offense.
Okay, so there are two options for this, in that case, Mr. Speaker. A uh diminution of the salary, and at the same time, if it is available, a lowering of the position, Mr. Speaker. Um, my last question, Mr. Speaker, pertains to um the BARM and its relation to the Civil Service Commission. The BARM Civil Service and its relation to the Civil Service Commission. Is the BARM deemed an LGU, Mr. Speaker?
No, Mr. Speaker, uh, the BARM is an autonomous regional government. It is a class of its own, Mr. Speaker. Even as far as the civil service is concerned.
So it is not a local government unit as far as the Civil Service uh Commission is concerned? Um, I was asking this question, Mr. Speaker, because for a regular LGU from the provincial level down to the uh municipal and barangay level, if they create positions, they go through the legislative branch for the creation of positions in their bureaucracy uh within the local government unit. The legislative branch or the sanggunian passes a law approving the newly created positions. In that, and that is required, Mr. Speaker, by the Civil Service Commission. These law or ordinance ba- passed by the legislative uh branch of the local government units are required to be submitted to the Civil Service Commission as basis. It's like a NOSCA. It's a basis for the CSC to attest or make an attestation. Tatatakano po 'yung appointment paper ng anyone who will be appointed to those newly created positions. In the case of BARM, Mr. Speaker, with respect to the Civil Service Commission, in the defunct ARMM, the ARMM submits a list of positions called the NOSCA, and this should be approved by the DBM before Civil Service Commission will attest the appointments of those who will be appointed to those positions. In a case of BARM, Mr. Speaker, how will the process be done? What is very clear is that all positions that will be created, all appointments that will be made, need to be signed or attested by the Civil Service Commission. Is this found in the Civil Service Code? The process for doing this? Are we going to follow the process that is uh being implemented by local government units? Or are we going to follow the process that was implemented by ARMM as a sui generis, an autonomous region, which uh submitted um positions, a listing called the NOSCA, to uh the DBM for approval in what you call the PSIPOP? But in BARM, Mr. Speaker, I would like to, it it's, this is a clearly a a question. Uh, it's not a rhetorical question. I I would really like to know how this will be done so that Civil Service Commission will attest the appointments that are submitted to them.
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, I thank the good minority leader for that question, which gives us the opportunity to clarify that this is actually being done already as soon as we enacted the administrative code. So uh to answer the question, neither of the instances of the LGU nor of the former arm are applicable in the case of the BARM. What the BARM does when the administrative code was issued, it is the MFDM as a counterpart of the DBM, which issues the NOSCA. So that process of elevating it to a national government agency is no longer required in our situation in the BARM. And that forms the basis for the uh publication of the vacant positions and also of the CSC in the attestation of the appointments made uh based thereon.
That would be your last remarks, MPLA Mia? Thank you.
Mr. Speaker?
Yes, please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. So that means, uh, Mr. Speaker, for clarification and so that everyone would understand this, especially those who have been appointed and who have submitted concerns, Mr. Speaker, my office has received um letters concerned about the attestation of their appointments. The process now is that with the passage of the administrative code, the positions that have been created by the government of the day per ministry, per agency, are submitted to the Civil Service Commission, and then later on, that will be used as the basis for the attestation of the Civil Service Commission. And it's the the parliament no longer needs to pass a law uh listing the positions that have been created, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Speaker.
I'm sorry, yes, would that be your last uh question?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that is my last uh question. So considering that, um, will this, is this process included already in the Civil Service Code, Mr. Speaker? As my last point, Mr. Speaker.
That is contained, Mr. Speaker, in the admin code, and again, that is already being implemented uh in the appointments uh made within the Bangsa Moro region.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, that is, that was my last point. Uh, thank you very much to the proponent uh of the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code. Salamualaikum.
Waalaikumsalam, thank you to the good minority leader and for all members who participated in the deliberation of the Civil Service Code. Majority Leader?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, considering that the minority leader is the last to be interpreter, uh, therefore, Mr. Speaker, I move to close the period of interrogation and debate.
The period of interrogation and debate on service service code is hereby closed.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, may we request any member, uh, those members of the parliament who would like to signify the interest to propose a amendment to send the proposed amendment to the Secretary General, uh, your Mr. Speaker.
We reiterate, all those who have availed of the period of amendments and have signified their intention to propose an amendment, please do so in writing, submit that, coordinate with the Secretary General so that your proposals would be incorporated, may be incorporated tomorrow once we open the period of amendment.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader?
Yes, uh, therefore, Mr. Speaker, I move to
suspend.
I move to suspend the session until tomorrow.
Session is suspended until tomorrow at one thirty in the afternoon, sharp. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi talaihi wabarakatuh. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh.